Okay, and we're live. And ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Charlton Board of Selectmen meeting, January tenth, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty P. M. If we could all rise for the
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to consent minutes of regular meeting December thirteenth. I would accept a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion through as written.
A second.
Any opposed?
No.
Here none? Passed. Community relations announcements in open forum.
The town hall will be closed on Monday, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, in observance of Martin Lurin King. The two thousand twenty-three dog license now available at town clerk's office by mail or online at the town's website. Author talk with Andrew Noon, Beth Sheba, Spooner, A Revolutionary Murder Conspiracy, Saturday, January twenty-first, from one to two, at Dexter Hall at the library, no registration is required. A retirement party will be held for Terry Godd, who retired as the executive assistants for the fire department on January twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. That's at six P. M. at the Aben Elks at seven fifty-four Southbridge Street in Aben Moss. Tickets can be purchased for twenty-five dollars by contacting fire chief at Knoff at five oh eight two four eight two two eight zero or at the fire station. I do have two announcements that were on the agenda. First of all, first of them, the heroes among us is the gala that is put up by the Dudley Child and Education Foundation, not to be confused with the PTO. The organization helps to fill the gap between the budgeting and the needs of the classrooms at our schools. Last year, they were able to come up with over thirty-four thousand dollars to help the teachers. And I'm sure, as you all guys know, the teachers oftentimes coming up with their own out-of-pockets expenditures to buy the classroom equipment and alike. So for anybody who's interested, it's April first, five thirty to eleven P. M. And it's at Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center. All the information is on the D C E D C F website and on the social media. You can always reach me. And then Chippens, just to remind everybody, we do have a food pantry here in the town, and it's now busier than ever. Every third Saturday of each month, we have families and people coming in to seek some help. So if you do have anything to donate, any type of the food, let us know, come to the Chippens in the back of the town hall. Help to load it off. We do need help with that. And if you do know anybody who is in need of help, and there's a lot of people out there these days, just point them in the right direction. Thank you.
Very good. Then then I'm assuming we can go to open forum. So we have Lynn, I guess you're there. You're you're on vacation. Thank you for chiming in. Can you hear us?
Lynn, you're on mute, or maybe we have you on mute.
She's muted. There we go.
There we go. So a little bit of background on this. And this has nothing to do with the project that they're that they're trying to do, that they're proposing in front of planning board. But it was more about the the unleashing of of social media propaganda that kind of like like may have gone, may or may not have gone a little farther than it probably should have. I've known this group for twenty years. I respect them what they do. It's it's their two children's camps with that summer camps for children with diabetes. So it's kind of a tough one to argue against. Bill and I have both reached out to Lynn in the past week, and we had conversations. But Lynn, I just wanted to offer you an opportunity to come up and reaffirm what Bill and I were saying. And so tell us, tell us what you got to know.
Okay, so a little background. I'm going to expand on your background. Jocelyn Diabetes Center, as many of you know, formerly owned Camp Jocelyn. In two thousand and eight, we began managing it. In two thousand and ten, we purchased it so that we could expand and build newer cabins. For those of you who know the girls camp, Clara Barton camp, there's heat, there's electricity, and they have bathrooms. At the boys camp, they have what we call the lav. And thankfully, none of you have to use it. Because it's the great big college dorm bathroom that is no privacy, and they have to leave their cabins at night. And it also helps us with supervision. So the small cabins that we have literally sleep eight people. So putting eight in there, we can only put five campers because we need three staff members with them. In two thousand and four, before we purchased Camp Jocelyn, there was a site plan submitted with the intent, when the Penta Dining Hall was built, to expand cabins. Now, the site plan is similar, but different, in that we want to remodel one of the old cabins that's in the back of Penta. But these are not new plans. They are not brought on by the fact that we want to rent the facility. We do currently rent it, just to be totally upfront, only for one day, weddings. So we have weddings. We have our own auction there. We do let the Boy Scouts come once a year. And other than that, it's we offered it to the town, we've offered it to the school system, same as in Oxford. There is no intent to sneak immigrants, migrants, homeless people into the camp now or in the future. We would have to go through a process, and I think building commissioner Curtis Musk, as mentioned in a Facebook post, that that would need a lot more work on our part, a lot more permits, and all of the boards would be involved in that. We just can't. So I you have my word, that is not the intent. We do have staff that live there. If anybody has heard that we're sneaking them in, and there's lights on there at night. Yes, there are. We have landscape lighting that comes on automatically. And we do have staff that live on site for security purposes, and they have direct duty with children, so they live there.
That's
I don't know if some of you have questions, or if you would like some background, Steve, on what we're doing in Oxford. Would that help?
It does. I I could I could ask a quick one, unless but I'll open it up for sure. If so, in Oxford, because that seems like on the social media, the hundred and fifty comments that I saw, they were, most of them about Oxford, in that you were bringing in migrants, but anything, any and and God bless you for that, but anyone that you brought into Oxford were Massachusetts residents from from the Worcester Housing Authority that needed temporary stay. Am I correct on that thought?
Through the Central Mass Housing Alliance, and they were put in touch with us through the state housing commissioner. We are only renting it, just as we would any other overnight rental in Oxford. The difference is, it is long term. But we have other groups that rent the property. This just was long term. We had started out working with a different organization. I won't mention. And as things progressed, I was not comfortable, and our board was not comfortable with some of the red flags we were receiving. And the state had us working with C M H A, Central Mass Housing Alliance. I felt that they aligned more with our values, our concern for liability, our rules, regulations, and we were happy to work with them. It is a contract that we have rented to them. We don't decide who they bring. But it was part of the concern, based on the rest, a few neighbors, that they did not want immigrants, migrants, anybody that was not a resident of Massachusetts. And they've stuck to that. I cannot tell you that some of them don't speak English. They've been here for quite a while. They have jobs. Some of the things that I've received phone calls of were, well, why are there extra cars there? Well, some of them have jobs. And that's hard for, I think, the general public, some people, to understand, that they don't have a home, that they have a car. Yes, because they're trying to find their place in society and working really hard. I have been on site, not this week, but from the very first day that they started moving people in, because I wanted to be there. I wanted my presence known that we would be involved. And I have staff on site. I will tell you, there was nobody there that didn't break my heart seeing them move in. There's two pregnant women there right now. There are children there now. And the difference in how some people look at it, and I have to give kudos to the Oxford Superintendent of Schools. Every time a child moves in, and I we are still under thirty people that are living there. The superintendent of schools shows up after hours at dinnertime to introduce himself to those students and welcome them and their family. So there are a lot of the people that want to help if they give us the chance to explain what's going on, and they can also reach out to C M H A. Families were not moved in at night. It was not. We had an open house. We invited the neighbors. We talked to all town boards. The Board of Health came out just to double-check things, because we hadn't had our summer inspection yet. The plumbing inspector had to approve extra washer and dryer in there. The building inspector came out. Like, everybody was involved in that. It did not need any town approval separate, because we were already approved as a rental site in the town of Oxford. We are not approved for that in Charlton. Sorry, I know I reiterated that, but I really just want to make it clear. We know we're not approved.
So and and unless, does anybody else have, is anybody in queue with questions? I can't tell.
No questions.
So as as far as Charlton goes, you're you're tearing down, you could tell us about that better than I could. You're 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 tearing down fifty, seven
We we took down six cabins. Three were taken down right away, once the septic was approved through the town and all of the departments. And we had asbestos. We had that remediated. They are all down right now. And we're going before the planning board. It's under peer review right now, and that will come up February first. We know our timeline is tough, and we do not expect to have the new cabins in, because of delays on our part, the engineer, for this summer. So even our summer camp is going to be much lower enrollment than it has been in the past, because we just don't have the cabin. We can get the one remodeled. That will help us a lot. But typically, in a one week in the summer, we have seventy-five campers and at least forty staff members. And we'll be lucky to have forty campers and twenty-five staff members, just because of lack of beds and the timing with everything.
Yeah, yeah. And everyone needs, just from my perspective, everyone needs to understand. Clara Barton and Jocelyn Camp are children's camp, summer camps for children with diabetes. Did they go and they and they get to hang out with people that have diabetes, with kids that have diabetes? Your major, how much how much of your how much of your income comes from fundraising?
Fifty percent, and the rest is our endowment.
It's it's what?
It's probably at least fifty percent from fundraising, counting our annual appeals, our events. And the rest comes from camp enrollment, and we have a very good endowment fund.
Yes, yes. So I guess my point on that, and the only reason, and one of the reasons I invited Lynn here tonight was just if fifty percent of their income comes from fundraising, and if they're getting bashed on social media, I thought there needed to be an explanation as to why. Just clear the air. So Lynn, thank you. If anyone has any questions or
No, Lynn, thanks for diving in on your vacation. I think, you know, when Steve mentioned a bunch of coming in, I thought it was a great idea, because, you know, we could all pretend that social media doesn't exist, but when you look out on
I'd like to, after last week.
But when you look out on the respective Facebook groups, the reality is, I think
Thank you both. And thank you all for listening and taking the time. And feel free to visit camp anytime as well.
Oh, we're oh, we're coming.
Yeah. I just think it's important for
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Yep.
I just think it's important for leadership in town to sometimes step in and just say, what you're saying is wrong. Because it can have very, very negative impacts on a lot, on like a lot of people. So when Steve mentioned bringing Lynn in, I just thought it was a great idea. So Steve, well done.
I agree, especially with the fundraising.
Thank you. Yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Lynn.
Lynn, thank you.
Anybody else for open forum, Mr. Chairman?
It is six forty-four. Do we, what do we want to do? Do we want to go to the scheduled appointment? What's that?
Is there anyone else here for open forum, out of the audience?
Oh, oh, is anyone else here for open forum? I'm sorry.
We can either do the scheduled appointment, or we can fly through the appointments or resignations. Up to you.
Everyone is here for the scheduled appointment. That's going to be in one minute.
Yeah, I see Chief Chief out back some.
What's that?
No, I see Chief Dowd out back for the Thanks, Jim. How about, Ms. Chairman, how about this? How about I make a motion to appoint Matthew Power to the Economic Development Commission as the business owner and resident?
I second.
Oh, 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 we can just, or we can just roll through that. Yeah, I don't think it's going to be, yeah, yeah. Okay.
I second.
Appointments and resignation. So Andrew, you're where
Well, Bill's made a motion. He had a motion on the floor for that, so why don't you call for a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Appointment for DM dispatchers.
Chief Dowd is asking if the board appoint Danielle Johnson and Carrie Sewell as pro DM dispatchers for the police department. I recommend the board make the appointments as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed?
Notice of retirement. The D P W superintendent attaches a letter from D P W superintendent Jerry Boskett announcing his retirement effective August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. No action is needed to be taken from the board at this time, for your information.
Ms. Chairman, I'm sure we'll be talking a lot about Jerry over the next six months, but I think it's really great that that he gave us this much time on this. So again, looking forward to a transition plan and, you know, wishing him a good retirement. But he's going to be around till August at least, or I should say, yeah, really, August at least, so so see how it works.
That's going to come up fast, though. But but no, absolutely. Jerry's done a great job. He's Thank you for that. And now we're right at, look at that. Now we're right at six forty-five, and we're on for our scheduled appointment.
Good evening. Thank you for taking time this evening to let us bring you bring you up to speed on what dementia-friendly Charlton has been up to since we began about ten months ago now. What is dementia-friendly? Pardon me while I actually read, so I don't screw up their program. Dementia-friendly communities address the needs specific to their residents, advocating for dementia awareness and providing services, programs, and public spaces that support people with dementia and their caretakers. While each dementia-friendly community is unique to their needs, all dementia-friendly communities share one thing, a mission to make their neighborhood inclusive, welcoming those touched by dementia to continue to be active contributing citizens. Just to bring the residents in town up to speed, Elaine Maderas, our departed council on aging director, and the Overlook, specifically Kathleen Walker, had talked about potentially doing this program prior to the COVID pandemic. And once we worked through that and things started to settle down, town administrator Golis reinvigorated the idea and really took charge and had Elaine spearhead it, grow it, create it, and turn it into what it is today. And with without that direction from the board and the town administrator, we certainly wouldn't be here. So Elaine took that invitation and asked for residents and town employees to volunteer their time and to see who was interested. And several people turned up. The first meeting was held in March of last year, and those participants included the Charlton Council on Aging, the Overlook Community, Charlton Public Library, the police and fire departments, representatives from Saint Joseph's Church, Cornerstone Bank, Elder Services of Worcester area, Charlton residents, and local dementia friend champions. It was an extremely positive first few months. We do meet monthly. We take that opportunity to bounce ideas off each other about future opportunities for education, for residents, caretakers, and town employees. And we're very excited to see that all the dementia-friendly committee members have received at least dementia friend training, which is a one-hour training that is offered to individuals committed to being mindful and respectful toward people with dementia. We do have a few members that have become dementia friends champions, and what that does is that gives them the information to be able to deliver the dementia friend training to individuals and to try to spread the word and education. A few of the things that we have touched on so far, we've developed an emergency contact form. And what that does is it gives the dispatchers the information in the database at the police station to be able to access information about residents that have dementia, if they're potential wanderers, if whatever the case may be. We have names, dates, birth, you know, demographic information like that, that would be able to disseminate to the police and or fire departments if there is, you know, any need or interaction with those individuals on a on an incident. Some of the community groups and businesses that have offered trainings, we had Cornerstone Bank did their branch here in town. Everybody participated in that. Saint Joseph's Parish has done a couple of different ones, and we're actually redeveloping a new one for them to expand. Trainings have been offered to the police department and fire department, and the library is in the queue to receive their training as well. We would open up any boards, committees, residents, members of the community that are interested. Feel free to reach out to anybody on this committee, or, you know, just reach out to the council agent, and they get you in touch with some folks that can offer that training. This is Sarah Gary. She co-chairs the committee with me. She'll bring you up to speed on a couple of things that we've done so far.
Hi. The past year, hi. As you mentioned, I'm Sarah Gary. I'm I live here in Charlton, and I'm also a caregiver. So I I joined initially hoping to just learn more. But it's actually been really great to be a part of, you know, making some great changes. We've had some successful events in the past year. The first was in June. We invited Dr. Andrew Budson, who is a neurologist, a researcher, an author, and a leader in the field of Alzheimer's and dementia. He spoke at the senior center to a group of about forty or so residents, caregivers, and committee members, you know, about how to take steps to manage Alzheimer's and dementia. That was funded by the Overlook. We, in September, we had a screening of a movie, a documentary, called The Cycle of Memory in Dexter Hall. The film sheds light on the struggles that families go through while taking care of family members. And that was partially funded by a grant through the the Charlton Cultural Council, Massachusetts Cultural Council. We did have a presence at Old Home Day, however brief it was.
So The clouds did as well. No, I get it. No, we were all there. I get it.
And our next event was the Walk to End Alzheimer's in Worcester on October second. We did, I think we actually exceeded our fundraising goal and raised about two thousand dollars. And in the Walk to End Alzheimer's puts about, I think it was about seventy-nine or eighty percent of that, those funds towards patients, people with Alzheimer's and dementia. So we felt really great about that.
If if you see me flipping through papers here, I remember it's easy to read it. I read the packet online earlier, as most of us do. It was, but but the bottom line was was town participation is something, is there, you're looking for a potential line item that selectmen could put up into the budget for this program, or?
That is certainly very generous, just the opportunity in the office.
I'm trying to find the page. I just It's easy to scroll.
There was a note in there that
It's at the end. What are your expectation towards us?
The expectation, just this is merely an informational opportunity to to shed some light on what we've been doing to you folks and to the residents that this servicing committee is here and available. We feel it's a great opportunity for folks that are caretakers, family members, people that are dealing with this disease. If if you don't know what it is, we've all dealt with someone personally or are caretakers for folks with dementia.
I think we all
And it's just a great community group where, you know, we bounce ideas off each other and tell people about the experiences we've had throughout the entire spectrum from diagnosis to end of life. So it's not, it's not a pitch. It's not a, you know, a beg for any funding. It's merely an opportunity for us to bring you folks and the community up to speed with the service and the opportunity that is here in town currently.
And I and I thank you for that. And I also I also read that there was participation from Charlton Police and from the fire department.
Correct. Yep.
Is there is 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 there one group that favors the other, or should we?
No, no.
No, we think it was equal per participation, because
Lieutenant Mason is the representative from the from the police department, and I'm the representative from the fire department. And we bring a different expertise to the table.
Yeah, absolutely. You all bring it. Yeah, there's no doubt.
I think I think that the Mas in general, Massachusetts as a state, is the the nation's leader when it comes to the healthcare. And Baker, you know, the legislation, whatever the year that he had it, two thousand eighteen, I think, what you guys did in one year, it's so impressive, so impressive. I I know how hard it is to create the, any board, any committee, and everything that you presented to us, it's it's overwhelming. I I love it. It must, you you've worked very hard for it, and I wasn't, you know, involved with anybody who who suffers. But I know that that it's hard to take care of of ones that that do suffer. So kudos to you guys. If there's anything we can do.
Yeah, Sarah, were there other things you wanted to highlight or talk around, next steps or plans, et cetera?
So there are some current services available in town through some of our team members. The Overlook offers memory cafes, adult day programs, and support groups. Those are open to the public to some degree. And there is a dementia resource and information centers in both the council on aging as well as the library. There has recently been added a dementia-friendly subsection on the council on aging page of the town Charlton website. So you can find out more there. We do have a Facebook presence as well. So please feel free to follow us for updates on events and useful information.
What are the memory kits you have listed in accomplishments? Memory kits?
Yes, we do have, they're being compiled, and I think we actually have an example tonight.
The memory kits are, we're collecting all the materials right now. Those are something that libraries have started to do in support of dementia-friendly, their dementia-friendly community. There's a lot of these communities throughout the state right now. And basically, they consist of books for all ages, even children who don't really understand, you know, what's happening with their maybe grandparent or something. So children all the way through caregivers, adult and caregiver, and including the dementia or, you know, memory sufferer themselves. So some of the things that will go into these kits are not only books, but movies, music, games, puzzles, and things for, you know, the patients to do with their hands, because that can be an issue. And then one of the, one of the things that we're pretty excited about is we have these animals that are, you know, they really are comforting for people. They meow, they purr, they, you know, they They meow, they purr, they, you know, they move. And so we've got a dog and a cat. We're going to see how that goes, but they will be allowed to go out like a book. They'll be able to be checked out, so, yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
Checked out and then brought back in. And that's, oh, that's interesting.
I hope it gets brought back in, yeah. But we're, you know, we're experimenting right now with all, you can put almost anything in these kits. So, um, right now, we're just sort of, we're starting with the books and the puzzles.
Where's that coming from? Who, we just go out and buy it or?
We, it comes out of, right now, I'm using money from our state aid grant for this. But, you know, if it really takes off, then I'll probably look for grant funding for future kits. So, yeah.
Mr. Chairman? So contrary to popular belief outside of bragging about my wife and kids, I don't like to talk about myself all that much, but my mom suffered from this, and she passed away this past year. And the reality is when it first hit me, what was going on, is the scariest thing you'll ever see if you haven't been part of it. There's, there's no recognition, there's forgetfulness, there's frustration. But selfishly, and I'm not proud to admit this, there was such a sense of loneliness of what in God's name do I do with this type of thing? So on a personal note, I just want to thank you and the committee for everything you're doing, because I don't ever want to see someone like deal with this alone. So everything you're doing for all the residents in town who have it, and I'm going to be honest and say just for all the caregivers who have to handle a situation that quite honestly, very few people are trained to do. I just want to say thank you.
Well, these are first responders, hopefully. Go ahead.
I also wanted to speak up as part of the committee. Um, I'm one of the dementia friend champions who's been trained to do the dementia friend program. So I'd like to offer it to the selectmen, uh, the board to go through the one-hour program. Sometimes it's a little longer, um, because part of the importance of getting this training out there is so that people who are dealing with the public can, might be able to recognize that somebody they have dementia and be able to approach them in a respect, you know, that they wouldn't treat them with respect. They don't always understand, um, the situation, and it's just sometimes more helpful to be able to recognize if you have it personally, that within yourself. So I'd like to offer that up as well as one of the.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
No, thank you, thank you. I, I, I would, is it, I would think based on everything that we read about this and the comment, how common it is, that there's probably a lot of communities have a line on it in their budget for this. I would guess.
Well, we can do some research.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's worth looking into to see how we could provide some support, uh, if we can, obviously.
Yeah.
Great, that'd be great.
Very generous. Uh, some of the, just real quick, we don't want to take too much more of your time. Sarah will wrap up with some of the, the upcoming opportunities we have, because it, it may strike a chord with some residents.
Yes.
Or members of the board or folks here, um, to be able to take care of some opportunities, so.
And thank you, Beth, for adding, we do, we do want to, um, you know, provide opportunities for, um, anyone in town who's interested in, in, um, the dementia friendly training. But we are going to offer this year through the Overlook, um, another viewing of the cycle of memory, um, trying to get a, a wider exposure there. And it will be open to the public. We'll have more info, um, coming in, um, in the coming days. The, um, memory support collection, as was mentioned, is going to continue to grow and, um, will be available at the library for residents to check out. We are planning, um, an elder law event. That is in the early planning stages, but that will give, um, residents an opportunity to get a handle on the legal aspects of caring for someone with dementia. That's a pretty broad scope.
We're targeting April for that.
And we've also reached out again to Dr. Budson to make a second appearance. He does have a new book coming out called Why We Forget and How to Remember Better. And Tri Valley from Dudley has joined us, um, and they are going to be sponsoring a support group that meets at the library. So different time, different options for people than what we were already, um, offering in town.
That's wonderful. And thank you guys so much for what you do, and both, and I'm pick, and not picking on Charlton Fire Department or Police Department. Everybody, everybody involved in this group, thank you very much. It's, it's, we read about it every day, it's in the paper, we know it, it's common. Many of us have been touched by it. Bill as well? Thank you.
Perfect. Um, just to wrap up real quick, uh, two shout-outs. Susan Camaras is our liaison between our group and the dementia friendly Massachusetts. She has been phenomenal to deal with. She's remote, she's in the Nashville area, but she zooms in every single meeting. She's a go-getter. She dedicates her entire existence to, to this cause, and she's been fantastic to deal with. And secondly is Elaine Maderas. Without her, um, this certainly wouldn't be where it is, and we're extremely happy with where we are a year into this or ten months into this. We just hope that the next X amount of years is just as productive and.
And she still, she's on a board, she still is, right?
She, she is not. No, when she resigned her position, um, she stopped coming, but she's, she's going to attend the, you know, opportunities, she's going to be a part of the walk still, so.
She retired in like.
No, I know that she did, but maybe.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no stopping her. No, no.
But her presence is, is felt every single time, because she created this monster, so. We do have a lot of members of the committee here. And I just want to thank them. Obviously, you know, the co-chairs of this, it's, it's not, you know, Sarah and I, it's an entire group and it's, you know, they're a force to be reckoned with. But with that, thank you very much for your time. We certainly appreciate it. If you have any more questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them. If the residents have any questions or concerns, they can reach out to the council on aging, um, Sarah, myself, or Karen at the library.
Do, do you have a, do they have a, um?
Website?
On, on the town Facebook pa, on the town website, do they have a council on aging dementia group?
Yes, yes, it is available on the town's website.
It's very new.
Yeah, we don't have much.
There's not much on it yet, but.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't think I even looked.
We are meeting tomorrow, and we're going to work through that, uh, to get that, a lot of our information.
Doing a social media.
Social media on there.
So can I get linked to?
Massachusetts as well, so.
Nice.
It'd be a great resource for folks that want to start the process. Thank you very much.
Great project.
Thank you.
It's, it's a great, thank you so much for all, and no, it's, we're, it's very important. Thank you.
Have a very nice. Thanks for coming, everybody.
But then we're moving on to new business. Ah, CMR PC.
Delegates and alternative to CMR PC. So each year, the board is asked to appoint a delegate and an alternate to CMR PC as its representative. Uh, the current board of selectmen delegate is Patsy Ridlike with an alternate being Basha Zaraski. The board should vote for a delegate member and an alternate member. The bor, planning board will appoint their own delegate, which must be a member of the planning board, so.
I think it's time for us to give the voice, um, to go on this one.
What's that?
We already done it for two years, and Patsy for three or four.
You know, I'll, you know, I'll take it back.
Yeah, it's good, it's, yeah.
Sure.
We went to the, there was a nice event we went to.
Yeah, I mean, I'll do my best to attend, but, uh, I'd be happy to, um.
They zoom a lot, too.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know. I would be hap, if, if, if no one wants to do it, I will be, I will happily volunteer.
Okay.
Motion that we, um, have Bill represent us, um, at CMR, for CMR CP.
I second window alternate, sure.
I don't know if we need, no, 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 I'm, I'm, you know what, I'm, I'm of the opinion that, that if you sign up for everything and can't make it, you can't do anything well. So I sign up for things that I can do, and, and being chair, being EDC, being, I'm, I'm trying to do everything that, that, um, I can't spend my.
Bill, if you, I, I can do it. As an alternate.
As an alternate, sure.
Yeah, if you need to.
See, that's.
Problem solved.
Learn that, that's salesmanship, right? You're going to figure this. I already knew the answer. I, actually, I didn't, but I'm glad you did. So we have that. So there's a new motion?
Second.
No, there's a new motion.
To approve Basha.
And Basha is a.
Alternate.
Is an alternate. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Hearing none?
All right. P twenty-five radio system bid award. So we received three bids, uh, for the, uh, P twenty-five radio system. They were received on December seventh, uh, twenty-two. Uh, we've reviewed all three bids and recommending the award, the bid, the award, award the bid to Cybercom Inc. out of Woburn. Cybercom provided an overall technically complete proposal, demonstrate experience of project management, and implementation of projects of the size and proposed equipment based on a single source vendor compatible with our existing systems. I recommend the board award the bid. It is still contingent upon us negotiating, uh, price. And negotiations fall through, we will look to the second ranked bidder.
Andrew, I'm assuming both chiefs are fine with their company?
Yes, we have all chiefs review all three bids, myself and, uh, Mark Katie from LB Communications. Uh, Cybercom was the top ranked bidder.
Makes it easy. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion to, um, to start that process.
Yes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none? Passed.
Next is a request for wayfinding sides, signs for Wayside Church. Wayside Church located at six Hagerty Road is requesting permission to install three signs with the wording Wayside Church. Arrows pointing in the direction of the church and the miles the sign is away from the community building at the following locations. The southeast corner of Dresser Hill Road and number six Schoolhouse Road, the southwest corner of Partridge Hill Road and Colburn Road, and the southeast corner of Oxford Road and A. F. Putnam Road. These proposed locations are in the right of way, right of way of roads and are permissible with the board's permission. I would recommend you approve the request, and once the board approves the request, the building department will issue a sign permit.
As a proud resident of Hagerty Road and knowing how historical that church is, I would like to make that motion.
I second.
I would too, I would too. As, as long as, and I know you, and I, and I know they would, as long as somebody maintains the, the brush line around those signs and all that type of stuff. Absolutely. Absolutely. The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed.
All right. The next order of business is, uh, to open the annual town meeting warrant and approve the budget calendar. Uh, the board is scheduled to open the annual town meeting warrant tonight and approve the attached FY twenty twenty-four budget calendar. All departments have been notified to submit any articles to my office. The board will be asked to close the warrant at your March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. And just as a, uh, little bit of amendment or add to the calendar, we had a request from CMR, uh, sorry, uh, DCRSD to have a joint meeting on January twenty-fifth at Charlton Middle School at seven o'clock PM, uh, to discuss their, uh, budget proposal this year.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, that, that, that did change. I saw that as well.
And, um, and they asked for the RSVP too on that too.
Yeah, I'll definitely be there barring anything peculiar. So we probably want to post it, make sure we're good.
Yeah, we will post it as a meeting and notify them.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a formal motion to open the annual town meeting warrant.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none? Passed.
The next order of business would be, I don't think we're all business, nothing for the, for the, for the community reports, so pol, the OS policy review. Uh, so beginning of new year, I think it's time to, we begin review of standing board of selectmen policies. Each regular meeting, uh, we'll look to throw three, five of, um, the current policies on for your review. Uh, right now, the financial policies are incorporated in the board of selectmen policies. What we'll look to do is separate those financial policies to their own book, um, and just look at our operational policies first. Uh, inclu, enclosed for your review are the access to town council policy, actions, decisions, minutes of meetings policy, agendas, agenda closing policy, air conditioners and town hall policy, and anti-idling policies.
Ice mix.
You tell us all in alphabetical order, yeah. I've included all the policies with some recommended changes on each.
So, Mr. Chairman, at least if it, with your indulgence, if we take these one at a time, um, through you, Andrew, the access to town council?
Yep.
From what I saw, you were just removing duplicative language?
Yep, that's it. Yeah, I didn't realize it was the same wording on.
That one's pretty.
So unless the board has concerns, I'd make a motion to approve as amended?
I second, sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none? Passed.
All right. Uh, next one, Andrew, it seems like what, you're?
Removed.
Yeah, you're like removing the bylaw, I'm sorry, you, why don't you give me a?
Yeah, no problem. So, uh, bylaw advisory committee, I don't believe that is a standing committee anymore. The town accountant slash finance, uh, services coordinator is now a finance director, so they're making that change. And then EMS, or services coordinator is no longer a separate appointed position, so those were the, those were the recommended changes.
Motion approved as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, saying none? Passed.
The agenda closing, from what I could read, that's just basically we're cleaning up the lan, the language to make sure that we stay in accordance with the open meeting law?
Yeah, so when this was originally posted, this was back before the town had adopted the online posting of meetings policy, so I'm just updating to say in accordance with open meeting law, on the town website, you know, basically, uh, pro forma.
Uh, motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and unopposed? Passed.
Air conditioners, I know we don't even have them anymore.
Right. We now have, you know, mini splits, so I would say.
Motion to, to delete this policy.
Yes, yes, please. But that, that's town hall, not PD.
Yeah, town hall.
Anti-idling.
Yeah, and no changes to that, I think this is for a D O E R required policy to have on file.
Do we need a motion to keep it on?
No, we can just say motion to.
Yeah, you don't, motion just to, yeah, to affirm.
Most to, to concur.
Sure, works for me.
Most do agree, yeah. Yeah, I, I read through that earlier today, and I was, but, all right. I just worry about guys idling in their snow truck and their snowplows.
It's more or less for, um, compliance with, with the D O R, ER's regulations as we are a green community. So we have to adopt a policy, um, against the anti, against idling.
Eventually, all those, um, environmental policies will all be part of our bond rating.
Exactly.
It's true, Moody's is now looking at, um, environmental social governance stuff when it comes to bond ratings for, um, definitely SEC companies, but.
Oh, so, so now our bond rating will be connected to how green we are.
To our environmental sustainability plans and environmental standards.
All right, all right. Selectment TA goals and objectives, or do, do we want to jump to Harry to let him go through his?
Yeah, I don't think we have any go, goals, objectives.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, no.
You can probably kill that off the agenda if you like, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Yep, you, you, we've already passed through you, so, so Harry, it's on to you, man.
The last day of the first semester will be January twentieth, and midterms will stretch from this Friday, the thirteenth, to next Thursday, the nineteenth. On the off chance of a snow day or delay during that period, the missed exams will take place on the twentieth. Any senior with a semester average exceeding ninety percent will be exempt from taking these exams. Students attending the twenty-twenty-three global awareness trip to Spain, Portugal, and Gibraltar are launching their next fundraiser, a Super Bowl grinder sale. Ham, Italian, turkey, and roast beef grinders are available for purchase at eight dollars each. All, all order forms are due January thirtieth. The National Art Honor Society's next meeting will be this Thursday, January twelfth. The Shepherd Hill Music Department is running a candy bar fundraiser to support their continued efforts. Bars can be bought from, for one dollar from any student involved in music programs at Shepherd Hill. And all Shepherd Hill juniors are currently involved in their civics action projects as mandated by the Act to Promote and Enhance Civic Engagement Bill, signed into law by Massachusetts Governor Charlie Baker in twenty-eighteen. The exceptions are those juniors currently enrolled in AP United States History who will be doing their project at the end of the year.
Awesome.
Have someone hit me up for a, for a sandwich or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Harry, do you have any questions for us? Congratulations and, and welcome back and.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's cool. Do you have, what, what do you want to know? What do you want to? I'm throwing you on the spot, because I, because I'm, because I can tell you're an intelligent kid and you, you'd probably do well on the spot.
The, the first thing we did was that, um, thing with the, where they were like, something, some social media thing had affected that diabetes camp, and I hadn't heard anything about that, so I was wondering like what exactly happened.
Oh, well, see.
Rumors ran amok that were completely untrue, let's put it that way.
That's no fun.
Yeah, 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 you guys. Yeah, 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 you guys, my son's nineteen. If, if you're, if you're under thirty, you've never heard of Facebook, so. It was, it was all there, but it was, it was like a hundred and fifty comments, and it was, some of it was just a little overblown, and it was just a little reason to clear the air.
Yeah, I agree, yes.
Are you going to that trip?
I am, it actually is.
You watch, Mrs. Pierangeli? Yeah, she's awesome.
Make sure that you, uh.
Oh, cool.
Get me that sandwich over.
I just actually even heard that gala that we're throwing, the education foundation. We actually have ten heroes, local heroes, teachers, maintenance, all sorts of people. She's actually one of them.
That's cool.
One of the nominees for everything that she has done to promote it for years and years and years. So many.
She's been very on the board with everything.
Yeah, so many, so many, so many kids have benefited from those trips.
And, and that trip is, starts, it's one for you?
It's April vacations, I think, the last full week of April.
And then you come back for a meeting or two?
In May and June, I guess, and then, I don't know.
We want photographs.
Very well.
All right.
I could do that.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Good for you.
Looking forward to it.
So, town administrator for your part? Go, if you, yeah.
So, FY twenty-four budget, just a brief reminder, the board of selectmen is invited to meet with the finance committee on Wednesday, January eighteenth, to discuss, discuss budgetary priorities headed into the next year. That's the next week we have the meeting with DCRSD, so.
No, that, that's the twenty-third, though.
The week after is the twenty, yeah, the week after is that.
So, should we?
The school committee's twenty-fifth.
Sorry, twenty-fifth, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Would, would it make sense to meet with Dudley, with the school district before we meet with our local FinCon?
You may want to at least touch base with them about your priorities, heading, heading into it. But additionally, the budget, budget roundtable with the department heads will be December, or be, um, on Tuesday, January seventeenth at ten AM in meeting room one, so anybody.
That's department heads here, yeah, okay.
Yes, so if anybody wants to attend that, you're more than welcome. Police Department HVAC study, so over the past few months, we've been working with Time Bond on drafting a development plan for improving the HVAC system at the police department, being a thirty-year-old system and kind of cobble together with improvements over time. Time Bond is evaluating three probable approaches to upgrading the system. After review and discussion of the preliminary report, the opinion of probable cost of the recommended upgrade will likely be in the range of nine hundred thousand dollars. And another consideration of this upgrade is whether or not that cost will trigger required ADA upgrades in the installation of a sprinkler system. These requirements could drive the probable cost of threefold if required, so we'll keep the board apprised as to the final report when it does come in, probably have Time Bond present that to you guys as far as the alternatives. I did want to thank the board for the opportunity to let, allow me to attend the Professional Development Leadership Academy through the ICMA. The program was twelve-week self-paced course focused on many of the fundamental learning values, including maintaining a positive mindset, leaning effective change, communication, and collaboration, as well as measuring the metrics of performance while leading high-performance teams. Through the program, we developed our own leadership oath, and at the end, mine is be humble and lead from the front, which I feel exemplifies the leadership style I hope to continue to bring to the town of Charlton. And also, I am in line to become a credentialed manager candidate at the end of this month, hopefully, pending approval from the ICMA board, so.
Go, Andrew.
And then, just a little bit of staff recognition, I just want to thank Deputy Chief Katera and the members of the CERT team, who quickly stood up a warming center on the evening of Friday, January twenty-third, due to the extended power outages and the quickly falling temperatures that were experienced here in town. Members of the CERT team staffed the warming center from eight PM on Friday until ten AM on Christmas Eve, so their efforts were greatly appreciated.
Awesome. Thank, thank you very much for that, and that's, yeah, and the CERT team for everything they do. So, now, there's no other business at this point?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, just a very brief thing. I, I don't want to step on the toes of the Board of Health, but there've been some conversations around town around the IRF Day Committee that's going to be, the IRF Day Committee and IRF Day coming up. I believe historically that they've relied on business donations to try to, you know, kind of keep things up and going. Andrew, I don't know, again, with the board's pleasure, if you want to send a flare over to the Board of Health to say, if they were so inclined to make that committee a formal thing, I would be very happy to have a conversation to, at least myself, to say, you know what, maybe we can throw a couple of dollars into a line item for them to use so that they don't have to minimize the IRF Day cleanup, because anyone's who's seen those, like the number of trash that gets picked up on IRF Day Rounddown.
Will they be coming to that board, the old board?
I would probably say that they should go through the Board of Health first, just on procedural protocol, and then if the Board of Health is so amenable, then we can just have like a quick conversation with them. So, again, that's with the pleasure of the board, of course.
Yeah, so in the past, and I've been involved in that a few times, so in the past, they, they would raise money for all the bags from local businesses and all that type, so there was a committee.
Yeah, well, the donations.
Yeah, I think the concern is that there might be shortfalls, or that historically there may have been shortfalls, and they might have wanted to do a little more, or on, on a go-forward basis, especially knowing economic conditions, that the donations may not necessarily be as grand as they once were. So, would there be an appetite for discussion around a small line item? And we're literally talking small, you know, type of thing.
Well, starting with a committee, and then.
Correct, exactly. Yeah, so I suppose what I'm getting at is that to formalize an IRF Day Committee under the Board of Health, and if the Board of Health were so inclined to do so, and then we could have a discussion around, would they want any funding? So, again, it's just an idea, but I definitely do not want to step on the toes of, of the Board of Health. Just, Andrew, again, with the board's pleasure, if, if you could just talk to whoever the chair, was it Jim now, Sam or, was he mad?
Matt's current.
How mad is he? Yeah, yeah. But as I said, I mean, if he says no, that's cool, I'd, no, but.
No.
Cool, thanks for that, Chris.
And we're, next meeting announcement, we're, other business unknown at town opposing, Bill just covered that. Does anybody else have anything else they want to say, or looking at people that have been sitting here and, all right.
Chief is looking.
I don't want to talk about you.
No, I don't know. Next meeting announcement, January twenty-fourth, be six thirty PM in, in, in this meeting room, meeting room one.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to go into executive session under MGL, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one eight, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the DPW superintendent. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares.
I, yeah. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, roll call. Basha?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
Steve? Chairs, oh, Bill?
Aye. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Chair says aye.